We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today's date is August the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and this is the Board of Public Works and Safety. First item is adoption of agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda as presented?
I have none.
Motion to adopt.
Motion made by John, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gerald, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is presentation of minutes for approval. Board, you have a copy of your July seventeenth minutes? Is there any changes or corrections to those minutes?
Motion to adopt, I read them online.
Okay. Motion made by Gerald, is there a second?
Second.
Second by John, any further discussion? Hear none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Minutes stand approved. Next item is comments of citizens. We do have some citizens here that did ask to speak. We'll let you go first, and after that, if there's any other citizens that would like to speak, we would add them to the agenda as well. So, we have Steve and Tessa Fortwinkle here. If you guys want to come up to the microphone, just state your name and address, please, for the minutes, and see what you have to say.
Thank you for having me. Steve Fortwinkle, from Wacasa, who live at thirty-four twenty Mozart Street, in Tel City.
Okay.
Coming to you guys this evening, here recently, we've been there since twenty fourteen, I believe. Lived kind of catty corner from the Tel City Junior Senior High School, or Junior High School. Recently, redemption charge from Jasper has purchased it, done a nice job, looks great up there, remodeled it. It's a good, good place to have, you know, it's, the tool's back in, back in use again, so it's good to have. One of the projects appeared to be a lighting project. If any of you have been with that way, you will see it as black and corrosive. Number, I believe, nine to ten, six hundred light equivalent LED lights have been installed, four of which are downward facing, the rest face out towards Mozart Street, towards our home. I did prepare USB flash drive of the pictures. I was told, I've had some videos and pictures, so I could not share those tonight if the actual is not working. So, it's a, it's quite a light trespass issue that we have. Our house, our neighbors, the light coming across the street behind our home, the street line behind our home is extremely well lit. Our front porch is are well lit. You know, we've spoken with our neighbors, they are in agreement, it's just, it's just an excessive amount of light that's coming outwardly towards Mozart Street, towards the golf course, towards our homes. So, we asked tonight, we did look through the city ordinances, we do see there's a nuisance building ordinance. If you do look at that, it pertains to obstruct.
One fifty-one point five two, section three. It does just say that any building that is in compliance with all of your orders of nuisance building, but is offensive to any of the senses, sight, smell, or hearing, is considered a nuisance building, so you have that.
Do you have that ordinance number?
One fifty-one point five two, section three. The light does come in.
I'm trying to get to it right now.
One of our child's bedroom is on the corner that faces it, and it shines in his blinds and curtains.
So, we have been in contact with church a couple different times. They had shut the, the forward facing lights off for a time with just one pedestal on, downward facing light pedestal. They can have both, I, I, I don't know why the other one wasn't on, I think they said it was an issue with the light wasn't working. The downward facing, not a problem, the outward facing, one on the particular in the corner, it flashes every seven seconds, will go off, then will come back on. I have pictures in our living room, the light comes on, illuminates our living room, goes back off, illuminates, goes back off. You know, it's, the, it's the outward facing, and right now, we're at the time of year, we're nearing, we're going to the fall, we're going to the low daylight times. This has been a summer issue, nine, nine thirty-one, the bed anyway, when it's getting dark. Five o'clock soon, it will be, it will be dark, and we'll be dealing with this over twelve hours a day. You know, again, not trying to be a bad neighbor, glad the church is there, glad the building's in use. We want a normal park and lot light.
Not twenty-four seven, all night long, when sometimes, those really aren't even leaving, in our opinion. We've never had an issue being in that neighborhood, and we don't know anyone that has. But five is excessive facing outward, you know, like invasion of almost, I mean, if you read like light trespass, you know, it's a form of light pollution, it's a form of invasion of privacy. It doesn't, it doesn't do anything to their property, it's pretty much the golf course. I mean, I, the other evening, was sitting on the porch and seeing a group of four or five kids get out of their car and.
Pulling the church.
Pulling in the parking lot, out of the golf clubs, and hit balls with the golf course.
Teed off on number two tee box.
Like, that's how rainy it is.
It's so well illuminated.
Driving, rainy.
Yeah, it looks like a driving.
So, it's just the outward, I mean, we are totally fine with it.
I grew up in that neighborhood, I know, that used to be a dark corner up there.
Yeah, and, and I'm not asking for complete darkness, I understand, and been in contact with the church, I understand they have a business. I don't, I'm not asking for anybody to come in during darkness. You know, parking, downward facing parking lot lights are very nice, and it's similar to the street light. You know, they're not casting into people's, into people's windows and sort of, onto their property. You know, I, I, we bring this nuisance building, we also, you know, we want to start here and impress this, you guys at Texas City Council. If this isn't good enough ordinance, we need to create a city ordinance to remedy this situation. So, we don't have this problem, us, anyone, city residents, in the future, somebody decides to install a light, I mean, I could install a light right next to anybody's property and try and say, I'm, I'm living in my backyard, but it's affecting someone else.
And we've researched other cities that have ordinances for light trespass and light pollution, and we do not.
Sure. I, I see a representative of church here, I, I wouldn't mind hearing what they have to say, maybe they could make, hey, we're gonna fix it right now, and then we're all.
Well, thank you for your time.
We appreciate it.
We're all good, so.
Who did you talk to out there?
I spoke with Mr. Andrew, the first one I spoke with.
Yeah, that's why I'm like, they're here, so let's, let them speak.
The first person I spoke with was Ryan Stiles.
He, yeah, Ryan Stiles.
He was former Tel City gentleman, actually, he's the old church in Jasper, that's the first person I spoke with. Let's say that the, the outward facing lights were turned off, one street pedestal off, one.
And that fixed the issue.
It's a lot of light, that's a lot.
It fixed the issue for us. Now, both of them, they, they still say they have some issues, people in the parking lot and what have you, but both downward facing pedestals were not on.
Okay.
Since, since the issue, all lights are on, outward facing, the downward facing.
And the flashing.
And the flashing, the flashing, so.
I can understand the flashing being annoying, that I understand.
That it's outward, that it's, it's passing straight across.
Do we have lines?
Sure, I understand. Thank you for coming, do you have just, were you, I don't know if you were even willing to talk, but I started to call you out on the spot like that, but I thought, well, I, I didn't want, I just wanted to give you the opportunity.
Yeah, my name's Corey Andrew, I am the campus minister of the redemption in Tel City campus, also a Tel City resident. You know, we took over the building, it's been more than a year and a half ago, we just launched in the building in November, and I think we turned those lights on at first, talked with Steve, Steve said they were an issue, and we agreed to shut them off. With, with the poles on, we had some issues. It's not, it's, it's not just a little bit of issue that we have, between April and the big first week of June, we had five different trespassing issues. Two where we had, one where we had a person's tire punctured in the parking lot, on the area that's being lit by the lights that they're talking about. And then, we had some kids, or I assume kids, just because I don't understand committing crimes that doesn't benefit anyone. But, some people came and kind of dumped our, took some, took some hefty kicks at our landscaping rocks out front, pushed them all out into the, into the parking lot, out onto our sidewalk, that was also out in the front of the building. And then behind the building, we've also had garages broken into, tires slashed on lawnmowers and trailers, and had some donuts thrown back there, and then we also had somebody broke a window out of our, one of our door windows back there. And the police have come out and worked most of those instances, and have been working on it, but at the time, their, their best advice to us was lights and cameras. And we've been working on cameras, but we have lights, and so, we, we got lights going immediately, we've got a few more lights going on around the back of the building that have been on here for the last handful of nights or so. As far as the one with blinking, which I think, according to the video that I saw from Fortwinkle's house. According to the video I saw from the Fortwinkle's house, the, the light that is an issue specifically for their house, for the most part, is the one that strobes on and off. It's a sensor issue, we had our electrician look at it last week and tried to fix it, there's no way it's helped us fix, when he's working on it during the day, it's kind of got to get to midnight before you know if he actually succeeded. And I offered Steve, hey, we can just cut that one off the circuit. They don't seem to feel like that's enough. So, I feel like the most, we need light on that building, it's a million dollar building, with what, what the building is and what's in it, we need light. And especially with the issues that we've had of break-ins and stuff happening around the property, we need some security. So, that's all that we're trying to do, we want to be good neighbors, you know, and I've talked with Steve, tried to work with Steve on it a little bit, and there's just, there's only so much we can do without completely replacing the system. And when we put the system in, our contractors were diligent enough to look at building codes and put the lights in and fit the building codes at the time, and that's what we have. And so, that's our best security measure that we have at this point, so.
Okay. If you could get the blinking light fixed sooner than later, I'd know that would, that would bother anybody, I, I mean, good lord, that, that actually is a distraction for anybody driving, too, you know, I mean.
Yeah, we're, we're working on the blinking light, like I said, we're willing to take that one off the circuit altogether, because we've tried at least three times now to get it fixed. I think part of what caused the problem was whenever we first tried to aim it further down, at Steve's request, it started blinking, and then, you know, I don't think that there's any way we can fix it without just pointing it straight out like it was, which I think would also not please them, so.
I mean, and I'm not an electrical engineer, but in, in the electrical bracket, I do know is, you know, you can purchase LED bulbs that actually shine down, not out. You sound like your lights are shining out, they need to be repositioned or different bulbs put in them that would shine down, like in City Hall Park, we replaced our lights rather than glowing in the air, they actually have a halo that's shining down.
Yeah, so.
And it wouldn't come off your property then.
Yeah, seems like the, the halo causes a problem with the sensor again, where it causes the blinking. So, that's kind of where we're at with, with those. So, we're trying to do what we can, but again, we, we've got a, you know, probably a million dollar building there, and we've had some issues, we're trying to just keep this secure. And I think, you know, for that matter, the golf, golf course isn't too, isn't too upset that we're shining this light over there either, because they've had some issues, I know, on the water, that we can just enable them as well, so.
Okay. Any, Steve, or Steve or Steve, there's two Steves here, Goodson, building zoning, Fortwinkle, do you have anything else, Tessa? Do you want to share this? Okay, Steve Goodson, if you could try to coordinate between both the church and the Fortwinkles here, at least to get the blinking light fixed as soon as possible, that is, to me, that's extremely important.
We need to allow the access to the island, starting ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
About you seeing this.
Uh, no, city attorney, or Andy Hicks, he's Tel City Electric, he's.
I'm just gonna, I'm just supposed to out there, and his name is solving the problem, obviously, I don't know how many of you have those lights, but we can offer, we can offer him lighting, that we can put it through and it can shine backwards, that way. The light will fall hard below, but that's something we can do, and it's a small deal, but you can record, like, anything wrong with this, holes, lights, so that's an option that I can go and share with you.
Yeah.
Andy, would you be willing to?
It's part of it, but you're not getting that.
I don't know that since this project was completed, that only the downward facing lights, all of them were on. Like I said, one has been on, the farthest one was all towards the down.
Could, could I, I'm sorry, guys, let me step in here for a second, just make a suggestion, is that Andy's kind of willing to facilitate, Steve Goodson's aware of it. If everybody could gather some information, exchange contact, Andy, if you would help them have a sit down on this, I'm also happy to come take a look, I'm a city attorney, I'm gonna take a look at the ordinances. I can assure you, the worst thing in the world for anybody in this room involved is that it ever ends up in litigation. So, if we can get all these minds together, some folks with some electrical and lighting experience together, I gotta imagine there's a solution here.
Yeah.
So, and, and we're just limited in our meeting minute time right now, we got, we got meetings stacked up tonight.
But thank you all, and hopefully Andy Hicks can, can help you all work together and.
Yeah.
See, I think it's the same one, but it's the same.
Yep, and I invite this gentleman here, too, to.
I forgot you are electrical, never mind, I was talking about it, I should, I should have known better.
I've been sitting here trying to find the ordinances on my phone, and the app is not helping me. I'm familiar with them, I just couldn't get them on the phone.
Make contact with both parties in two weeks.
That'd be fine.
And give you another date, the next, next meeting.
That'd be perfect.
Yeah, I guess it would be September eight.
Yeah, okay. Before we move on, any other comments of citizens? Okay.
Do you live next to Jerry and Mary Mliner?
Yes. All right, moving on.
Yeah, I handle them very well.
Department head report, so we're gonna try to roll on here, I'm sorry, just not trying to cut you off, we're just on a time schedule. Steve, you want to go and give your report for building and zoning?
All right, thank you, Mayor Board, this report is for the month of July. We did issue twenty-three permits for the month, and that total work value was one million sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. We did issue one electrical for a value of five thousand, did have new one, new, a new home at Zurich Way for a value of seven hundred and fifty thousand. Four commercial permits at one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. Sixteen miscellaneous permits for one forty-six, five thirteen, one demo permit that was for the property on Nineteenth Street for five hundred dollars. We did issue a temporary license for two hundred. Moving on to complaints, we did have eight trash postings, the city did mow five yards, we did have one trash bust, that was fourteen twenty, Hetzelotsi, that was just a minor cleanup, I think we put it, went ahead and put it on the Waterville.
Guys have any questions for Steve? No? All right.
And an update on the public hearings, like I said, the Nineteenth Street property is being taken down now, slower than what we would like, but it is in progress. The property on thirty-seven tenth, I was out of town last week, Chief Lenny, I spoke to him earlier, and we'll, we'll run by this week, check on it, make sure he's, she is out. She had five As, correct?
She had five As.
Yes, to vacate thirty days.
So, I was gone last week, and I will follow up on that tomorrow, Wednesday.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to the next report, Albeestiff Greenwood Cemetery. You are welcome to stay if you want, you don't have to, so, I don't know what you've got going on tonight, but we're glad to have you here.
Fun, fun department head reports. Thank you, Mayor Board, July Greenwood, we have three traditional burials, they were all at eight hundred dollars, they were actually supposed to be nine hundred. And cremation burial, one of those were two hundred and fifty, and we had one mausoleum in there, but fifty dollars, we had two weekend fees, that was five hundred dollars. And on sales, we had one community mausoleum sale for three thousand four hundred, ran double four thousand, about a hundred dollars. And I've got another thing here, I need to get your guys' blessings on, hopefully. We're looking at replacing our side-by-side that we use, I mean, we use the heck out of it, we, it's used every time we dig a grave, and then all summer, the health, uh, lead eating and so forth, it's, it's usually handled the same there. So, I've got three bids on our, on our new one, would be, I've got two from John Deere, one from Rydham, one from Hudson. And the reason I had to go with two St. Millers was what we're looking for is not available, you know, check Kawasaki down here, flash is not available, not available in there. So, on the new one, Rydham, and this is a side-by-side, diesel engine, enclosed cab with heat and air conditioning. Rydham, their suggested price is thirty-two thousand five forty-nine, they discounted it down to twenty-seven nine ninety-two. We offered nine thousand dollars for the Kawasaki that we have, have them knock the price down to nineteen three twelve. And from Hudson, it's basically that, the exact same vehicle, and its suggested price is thirty-three seven twenty-nine, we knocked it down to forty-nine oh six. And then he offered eleven thousand for that old side-by-side, they knocked it down to eighteen thousand and six dollars. And then the third final bid is from Hope Outdoors at Jasper, this is our Kubota, and I'm gonna add, I want you to call them, because I figured they'd be too expensive, and I'm shocked. Their price was twenty-five thousand, and they discounted it down, and then they're offering, they discounted it down to twenty-two, and they're offering ten thousand for the old one, so the sale probably thirteen thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and eight cents. And it's actually got more options on it than what either of the John Deere has.
And you said that was Hope?
Hope, that Hope Outdoor in Jasper.
Is that a Kubota?
Yes, it is.
Diesel?
Diesel.
All these are diesels?
All of these.
Okay.
And I don't know if you're familiar with that whole three cylinder Kubota diesel engine, but it's great engine, I mean, we had them over out there, they got rid of a few years, and we had like three thousand hours on it. And the engine was still running good, but all of the rest of them was all apart. So, I'm asking for you guys' blessings.
And we do have that in this year's budget still to, to afford that. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the Kubota from all equipment.
Okay, we got a motion made, but John, is there a second?
Same equipment is what you want?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Gerald, any further discussion? Hear none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right.
Big savings there, thanks for your work.
Yeah.
Big savings.
Yeah, all right, moving on down the line, Chief Lenny, Tel City Fire Department.
Thank you, Mayor, quick.
Okay.
Fireworks went off, no problem?
They were great.
Everything was, was well pleased, use the two awkward words this time, I think we've got a little better anger about this time, so I think maybe two years, even like I say things, so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And then, according to, according to all my history, it's right now on the silver beverages.
Dr. Peppers and stuff, I'm sure.
Yes. And that's all it is, questions?
No? Thank you. All right, Tel City Electric, Andy Hicks?
Good evening, Board, I'm here, just giving you a little update, I'm going to put it down, still work going up the substation, they're starting hanging some switches and some miscellaneous. Got all, basically all the materials here on site now, except the transformer, transformer's been shipped out middle of September now, Peter Cross, and I'm waiting on about ten thousand dollars worth of transmission material. By the way, we have everything on hand, and for years down there, we're going at it, so.
Glad to hear that.
I think right now, we're looking, hopefully, November, first of November now, we're hoping to do it first October, but the transformer may only be about two months, kind of push back a little bit, so. Everything comes in, hopefully around the first week of November, we'll make hot.
Can they truck that in, they have to train that, that transformer?
It'll be trucked.
Any questions, Randy?
Appreciate you working with the Fortwinkles.
Yeah, thank you. I'm confident you can.
Tel City Electric Superintendent slash lighting mediator, saved, saved the day. We're gonna order new business cards for Andy.
And a bed pusher, too.
Yeah, and bed pusher, yeah, he's in.
Bed rider.
Bed riders.
I'll tell you how to push it.
All right, Parks and Rec.
Let me say this, we should do like a, an age limit on that bed race, then, forty over.
Senior division, sixty-five.
All right, Randy Long, Parks and Rec.
I don't know, you want to, you want to introduce to us?
Yes, you are. All right, Chief Low Island, Tel City Police Department.
Good evening, just a couple things, first, March, March festival, everything was, handled very well, and we were rolling Fort Haines this Saturday night, so I was nervous, but special thanks to Sheriff Malone, we learned a few reserve deputy students, and everything was well, people were well behaved, I think there were some calls away from the festival, but pretty much no, no problems there, so kudos to Scotts and Wrestle, and all that, and everybody was all, it was a pretty good weekend for us, I think, so. Couple weeks ago, during our individual budget, budget session with Connie, Phil and I, kind of looking at the twenty twenty-four budget, we talked about vehicles, I shared with this board a number of hundreds about issues that we've been having with our dodges. Turns out, seems like our agencies kind of running into the same thing, needing parts, just a lot of issues, marketing work that's being done on them constantly, it seems like. So, we, we look to make a change, we did buy one Chevy Opel recently, that's gonna be our sole resource car, but we are still on the waiting list to have it updated, John Deere's, since they are gonna be updating one of theirs, so it's setting a drive right now, not being able to be used for police work, that has no equipment in it. But during that meeting with Connie, we discussed that we would budget for two cars in the twenty twenty-four, and then she suggested that we go ahead and purchase another one before the end of this year, because the, our budget will allow that. So, Phil started calling them around, to different places, he called me this afternoon, so this is all kind of hot for us, Kelly Sherrelay, Northern Indiana, they kind of have a market on Opels right now, a few of those, they had an agency to back out on three. So, they have three in stock right now, they're black, beige suit, rated four-wheel drive Opels, they quoted us forty-two, two, there's, one of them is like a hundred dollars less than the other two, and that's because they had the more expensive one, they had their own start, but other than that, they're essentially the same, a hundred dollar difference between them.
I was thinking he said forty-three, but was it forty-two?
Well, I'm looking at forty-two, four here.
Okay, okay.
Then I misunderstood him earlier, so, so whenever he would call the, Connie did, and she's, she went to the first, she, she, she was definitely supportive, she suggested that we purchase two of them.
You bought it, Chair?
And then when I got the logo, she said, I offer it, so I, you know.
Considering we paid what for the one we.
See, she's getting your birthday present early, get you three cars.
Yeah, and, and I should say that we paid forty-seven thousand for our grandios, that's what we've been paying for, and I'll be honestly there, we, we're just not satisfied right now, we're having some issues, we can't get our pads, our pads that we're putting on them, or, or aftermarket pads that make us a little nervous, so we're never gonna get this point. And, you know, everything right now is supply and demand kind of thing, the owner is my D's or. The only reason why these are available is because the agency backed out. We ordered, for particular agency and, and for whatever reason they're trying to go through. So it's kind of a first time for a surf thing, and Phil was having to call in the right time, so. My suggestion would be, uh, that I would like to get permission to purchase up to three of them if the budget will allow it, with the understanding that we were gonna get two in twenty twenty-four anyways. So these will be our two that we're gonna purchase in twenty twenty-four.
And that'll come out in next year, we will not ask for cars in next year's lowest budget then.
Yeah.
And two of these would be what we would call admin cars. This is the chief of driving, a, uh.
A beater.
Two thousand and eleven.
Doesn't have air conditioning.
Doesn't have air conditioning.
The brake, the battery dies, the brakes don't work, seat don't.
The brakes kind of hit or miss.
I was in and I'm not lying.
So it's, it's a, that car we saw, it's still in the drive in, he has a complaint with these two. And then the other vehicle that we would probably deliver, what's our weight, is our, our, one of our affected vehicles, it's an Opel car, it's a twenty fifteen, I didn't hear that talk.
It's in the shop now, ain't it?
It's either a twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen, yes. It did some, some work on it, so. And it also has an air conditioner, the air conditioner comes on, we just turn her off. So there's no problem in summer, it's gonna be hot.
Some hand warmers for, for all the windows down in the winter.
It needs a module, and the module was like six hundred.
You just haven't figured the right spot to tap it on the, on the console.
So, I mean, I, I wouldn't be kind of mad for asking for three cars typically. But it was just with, with the opportunity of this, we were looking at switching to Chevy anyways. It's kind of an opportunity that I didn't look at it. Connie feels like doing this quarter.
Do you okay Connie up to three?
I'm, I'm good for up to two.
Up to two.
I'd just like to look a little bit more through my financing to make sure I have enough for the three. But I, I really think it's gonna be there.
The reason why I say up to three is, is because she is institution checking and I would like to also look at how fitting this is to us. Uh, because one of them would be a control vehicle and I would just like to get an idea of what it's gonna cost for the cage in it, because that's not something that we've got to do yet, uh, in any of our Tahos. So those kind of things, I'm not aware of what that is coming to look like yet. So, uh, the two that are gonna be admin vehicles are probably, because we're not gonna need the cages and that much equipment for them.
So if you're buying all three, I'd talk them down to forty thousand apiece, you know, I'm just saying, that, that's, that's the person to me that always is talking them down on something.
Yeah, I think there's a, they need to negotiate everything they have.
Oh, no.
They have a list, I still ask.
That's something that we would certainly consider. I think what we believe.
Phillip's car.
We deal with referring in.
Get it up there.
I think we would get more money because of how, how many places need this car. I think we would actually do better if we would put our, like, the municipal side, the email side. I think we'd get more money anyway. Especially, especially like our family, our abandoned car, because there's some agencies that may be starting to program and, you know, open any abandoned cars, or expensive vehicles and everything. So I think if we get three or four thousand more out of each car, it's a fair way, honestly.
Are, do these vehicles come, uh, police ready? Like, you know, just put all the stuff in and all that?
They, they come pre-wired, if you mind me saying, one of, these actually have spotlights on them. And they have the young lights, the police young lights in them already, and I think all the wiring is at a console, pre-wired, I think is, is what I'm saying. I was gonna refer to this on the city, but it's on a strategy, and I'm gonna refer to it as all of the, like, second quarter, you all can email, we can look at it.
Are they all black?
Yes.
So.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, allow Connie, allow for two of them, and finances work with Connie, that we go ahead and okay the purchase of the three Chevy Tahos.
Okay, there's a motion made by John, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gerald.
I want to discuss it all.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes, there is.
There you go.
And I'm not involved in your budget, okay? A lot of times when we bought stuff, we would pay half this year and half next year out of the budget, if, if that's an option.
So you're saying talk to the, like, Fort Wayne, I can't remember.
Yeah. You know, I mean, a lot of times when, like, Alvis, I'd go have money left and I'd buy them all or something, but you have now, have later, and they take it.
I, I know an option.
You're, you're right, there's been a lot of, I'm, John, I'm with really good on that.
Yes.
We have bought any, Kelly Chevrolet, I don't know where, I don't know if the county is sponsoring it or not, so.
The worst they can do is say no.
Yeah, that's just an option, but.
Yeah.
I'll second that motion if I have.
Mo, you did, we said the discussion part. So, uh, motion is made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
There we go.
All right.
Chief, thank Phil, uh, for, for work on that for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not gonna, I see one.
With the car, I'd be motivated to find some cars.
Come out of Jefferson.
Okay, I don't see any other department head reports, that looks like that's all the department reports. Before we go into wastewater adjustments, I have one addition to the agenda that's not on the agenda. That's important, so can we just?
I know what it is.
Uh-oh.
I don't know what it is, I have no idea. Chief, is that like what the sheriff's driving at top, is that what he's got?
Yeah.
Yeah. Lucky to find him.
Yeah, we grilled it. They handled yesterday with a firm and a little, a little, back out.
Where are they at?
That's what he told me.
I think that's right.
Oh, well, that's even better.
It's a nice little day trip up and back, do that.
I didn't do it.
Surprise, surprise.
Uh, Jeff?
Mm-hmm.
I might need a attorney.
Are we shorthand? Gang's all here.
This is the safest this room's ever been.
Everybody act up. Not gonna go well. This isn't about that for sale sign that was outside the police.
No, this is not about the for sale sign outside the police department. We had offers, but no.
Seen that.
All right, Roger, floor is yours.
Citizen, thank you for allowing me to recognize your support, uh, this afternoon. I'll take it on your behalf, so I don't know if I'm gonna say it, but. For the time, we want to represent, represent and recognize our chief, Derek Blod. I want to do that at the other meeting. On seven thirty twenty-three. Now, shit. I got a call, I went to the hospital and I encountered Earl and Chief. He was heartbroken, and he wiped tears when he, when he's gas. He needed to be everywhere at once, and all that cost. He asked several times, where do you go? You wanted to be at the best place for the citizens, and every time, anybody, anyone leave their body. I hadn't waited till this morning. I've had an appointment and I said that would be the best we could do to reach. And I tell you, this is telling you that I've written a call letter, for those who got to see him. And the reason I do is, he said that a lot of times, uh, he attends these conferences and he may have a bad about, he was sick. An adult will experience throughout their lifetime, maybe two, possibly three, four years, bro. Critical illness, Roger, what are them? I can't answer that for you. It's whatever makes you sad, you know, in time, when you're asleep. It's whatever causes your pain, your children, to be scared, when you're asleep, when you're asleep. Anything that you cannot see. Those precise things we're gonna see. I know Derek didn't do what he did that evening, and I was so depressed, for this recognition. He did. He never had the recognition. I can't tell you what he did, and I don't mean this as a insult. He's not great. He says, I don't know if it's sad, he says, I don't know if it's sad. Probably some horror bash, but it's nice. Make sure these gaps, any citizens, are harsh. We've been there several years, I gotta tell you that, what I have, I'm gonna have to tell you. And we were gonna have those, chief alive. All of us say it two to three times, in the whole lifetime, you see three, have to, we see more than that for shit. That is, that is sad, and it will tell us. We have to release parts, some fire part, and you gotta find out the truth. It's not a big part, it's all for starters, and see a message, your nursing staff, it's the people that see things they can't see. But when you're able to, that there's so much to let your own emotions aside. Put a thing behind, to make sure that his eyes, mental health is okay. And his pounds, who has covered many of the state police, and they were protected. While we later over at Grand Crest. Haven't been small, haven't been a city. And they were good, and they were good. We have bad officers that we never went to, all been through, across. Little plus city. And they said that they wish they had a department as high as possible. I think sometimes it's something they run over, right? They can execute on both two, parents, and theirs. And a little essence, you know. See if you can get it. You follow, they go to back row. We gotta do it, we can do that. Which we're training on first. Because everything, for us, uh, people used to have, but. Before we close, uh, I'd like to dance, I have everything, one of my best, uh, and then, you know, we get anything I can say, and I have a bunch of thought. But I do have a special, uh, yeah, it's here also, uh, for that, for that chief, very nice, you know. It's not gonna show you. You shouldn't be there, I'll get you home. It's not gonna show you. Carry on. It's everything, you're good, and I have a little. Okay? I hear you.
Well, I want to thank you two, for all you've done, helping keep this community together. You might have that morning. I don't know how we all did it, but you kept it together in this. And it's a means to remember, what we've done to help us through this. It's a challenge, but, uh, we're all still going and as we keep moving on, we'll all remember better as we did this past week, and quite fast, and we'll continue that. Thank you again for your leadership and all you've done to us.
All right, we have, uh, so, where are you, chief, where are you, chief? I call Derrick, somebody's saying, uh, you're talking about me, uh, maybe. These, these, uh, individuals asked to be here and we think we've got this very, very badly, we look at that, and, uh, we could give them another big time, and we, 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 uh, we do, uh, right now. Like, I just, the Glenn family.
Derrick?
On behalf of the Glenn family and all the citizens who are, we'd like to present you with the others.
Make sure.
Yes, sir.
All right, we're gonna speak to me right now.
Guys, and thank you all again. We started with interruption. We appreciate your time so much. Thank you all.
Anytime.
Thank you all for being here.
I don't think you know what to say, guys. I mean, getting back from the start of the world, I don't know. I found out it's our vote, Heather, what's, what's to be, it was real different.